All right, good morning, everyone. It's seven AM, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council Committee of the Whole to Order. Roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
And we do have a quorum this morning. So, good morning, everyone. First item this morning for discussion is a discussion on the productive alternative transportation agreement. And we'll call on Kayla Sullivan. Morning, Kayla.
Morning, Mayor, council members and everybody. I'm Kayla Sullivan, the Director of the Otter Express, the public transportation company that serves Fergus and other areas. We're here to discuss the transportation agreement we have with the city. It's basically a continuation of the current year. I pretty much copied it word for word, so I think you have it. I think, Breitlin? Yep. Lynn, I guess, sent out the 2025 agreement. I'm just respectfully asking for a continuation of the current dollar amount. We do get funded by MINDOT and the federal DOT, but we don't get funded at a hundred percent. So, we do ask for local participation to operate our services. So, in Fergus Falls, by far is our largest area that we service and number of riders that we service. Current year through about the end of November, we gave about forty-eight thousand seven hundred rides just in Fergus Falls. We also transport a lot of people to their jobs. I don't have that specific number of riders to their jobs, but we do go to about forty-five different businesses in Fergus, whether it's bringing them there and home or both. We do quite a bit of rides to work, which translates to keeping people here, getting them to work, and hopefully them spending their money here. So, that's in a nutshell, but I wanted to discuss. So, does anybody have any questions?
Thanks, Kayla. Just those numbers, so forty-five different businesses, is that in Fergus Falls?
Yep.
So, those numbers in first, it was at forty-eight thousand seven hundred, like close to fifty thousand?
Yep.
Rides, and that's in Fergus Falls?
Right, only this is, only Fergus, yep.
Only Fergus. Thanks, Kayla.
Yep.
I'm sure there's some questions from council members. Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, Kayla, for being here. We had you come to Tax Levy and speak with us, I think it was last year. So, you know, those businesses, that's pretty comparable to what it was last year, isn't it?
Yep, yep, very comparable.
And then, can you tell me what other cities are you guys servicing right now?
We also service Breckenridge and Purham. And in 2025, we're expanding into Barnesville. We have Clay County also and Battle Lake and Pelican Rapids in Otter Tail County. We're all set to go, we just don't have the staff. So, if anybody knows of any staff, you can refer them to me as a side note.
Thank you.
Yep.
Kayla, the history, was it the, did the city have a senior center bus transportation system prior to productive alternatives, starting that system, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it started with the senior center in town had one bus. And I don't exactly know the details of that, of why they wanted to get out of it. And then, I guess, through MINDOT, they came and asked productive alternatives to take it over.
Sure.
I think at that time, we were giving fifty thousand dollars. Does that sound right?
That was about the budget for the senior center bus.
For the senior center bus, yeah. So, we have, I think, we're in the ballpark, yeah.
Do you know, does county give you any funding?
Very little. They do give us, though, about twelve thousand.
About twelve thousand. Do you know anybody that could help raise that?
I'm gonna be working really hard on that now, because we do service a lot more than Fergus Falls and Otter Tail County, so, yes.
So, we would, we would look at this point, we can have more discussion, of course, but we're looking for a recommendation to the, to move to the council. Thank you, Jim. Second, from Laura. Further questions? Councilmember Mortensen?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate it. Kayla, first off, thanks for coming here today and presenting this to us. I, I wasn't quite sure what a service this was to our city. I, I don't ride the bus, I don't know a lot of people that do, but I spoke with one of your drivers here the other day, and I said, hey, should the city be funding this fifty thousand to them? And he said, absolutely. He said that you wouldn't believe what a service this is to our community for the elderly and others that ride the bus. And he stated that they would not be able to get around our community with a taxi and different things because of this. And so, I commend you for having it in town with it. One of the things, I guess, I'm looking for, since I'm new to the council, is do you have a route list in town? Do you have, like, a route that shows where they all go or different things like that? Because he said he had a route and some different things like that.
Oh, no, to answer you technically, no, we don't, because we're a demand response service, meaning we don't have any fixed routes like, say, St. Cloud has and Fargo has and Minneapolis has. So, you call us, you tell us where you want to go, when you want to go, and that's demand response, and then we put you in. What they were probably referring to is we do transport, what's called the DAC, a De-Activity Center, people that live in group homes that go to a different place for the day. And that's what some of our drivers call a route, because that's a specified time every day.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that help?
Yeah, no, that's good. He called it a route, so I just kind of went with that. One of the things that I want to know is, you know, as a good steward of the city is here, and I know we're in a two-year of a five-year deal. Talking to him, I want to know, are we giving you enough money, for one? And so, it'd be interesting to know the profitability of Otter Express. You know, is it, is it profitable? Is it making money? Or is it something that the city's money is going to something that's very highly profitable and we should cut back? And so, that's, because what I like to do, when I come to someone that asks me a question is, why did you fund it? Why didn't you fund it? And I don't know if I have that answer, other than I like what's going on at this time. Do you know if there's any way to get kind of a estimate of that for us?
Yeah, I can get you some more details. To answer you too, also, public transit isn't intended, or initially, it wasn't intended to make money. It's not supposed to be a moneymaker, because we get federal and state funds. And again, they don't fund us a hundred percent, so that's why we want local participation to help operate the system. As you probably all aware of, in the past about five years, a significant event happened, and so, the cost of our buses, gosh, almost tripled, quadrupled in some cases. Cost of repairs have gone up significantly. Lots of, even our local repair shops won't repair our buses, so sometimes we have to take them to Fargo or other places. So, our costs have risen significantly. But, yes, I can get you more solid numbers on that.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Any other questions for Kayla? Well, we certainly appreciate the services that you provide to those residents that, like Councilmember Morton said, to those who use that service, it's very important, and we very appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
In our community. There's a motion to move this approval of this agreement to the council on Monday evening. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Kayla. Next, we'll have an update from Visit Fergus Falls, and we'll call in the Director, Rolando. Good morning, Rolando. I see you brought some board members with you as well.
Oh, yeah. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share with you the journey of Visit Fergus Falls the last two years. It has been a while, a run, in a good way, though. I'm gonna share with you what we have done in the last two years and what are our plans for this 2025 year. The 2023, which was my first year, we, that was the year of the learning. I mean, I had to learn everything that was done here. And it was the year to build the basics, you know, to build the basics for me to promote the city. The basics, the branding, Visit Fergus Falls was kind of a hybrid that, you know, at the beginning, I didn't understand why they would share the logo with the city and with the chamber. I asked, are we part of the chamber? Well, we're not, we're members of the chamber, but we're not part of the chamber. Are we part of the city? No, we're, the city is our fiscal host, but we are really not part of the city. So, I say, well, then we need a personality by ourselves, so we need a branding. Because if you're gonna promote to other areas, to other cities, you need to have a personality. So, at, at some point, when people see your ad, they're gonna know, oh, this is Fergus Falls, you know? So, the branding, the new branding went live on April, 2023. The second was the moving, we need to move out of the city. And we didn't, we were not sure about how, I mean, how much we're gonna be the cost of the moving and stuff. But the moving was done by May, and we needed a new website, because our website was from 2013. So, it was a little bit outdated, and I wanted to create a website with visual, with photos, with video, with stuff showing actually the city and make you think that you want to come here. And the fourth one was the video reel. We did the video reel, and it went out in February, 2024. It had like 3.5K views organically, and then we did a campaign to increase the views on YouTube. Also, in 2023, we had the blessing of the GA4 technology that came in. The GA4 technology from Google is Google Analytics and tells you exactly who is visiting your website, what are the kind of people that is visiting your website, what are their interests? You know, you can tell by the pages that they visit. So, that gave us a little, a great map that what kind of people was coming, what kind of people was interested in our website. And then, you know, looking at the data after several months, I found out the Google search was our main driver to visitors. So, I say, okay, if Google search is our main driver, why we don't promote in Google? I think, to me, that was, that was the right thing to do. So, we started doing Google campaigns to Visit Fergus Falls. And at the end of the year, the Google campaign drove four thousand people to our website. So, we say, okay, this is kind of working. So, two thousand, and also, 2023 was the year to find out what were my biggest challenges. My biggest challenges to promote the town was the events, because even though when we created the website, it was super easy to submit your event to us, nobody would do it. So, that has been a main point, you know, trying to search and trying to hunt all over the place for events to put it in the website. And the number one, and the number one actual challenge to me was the, it's just one person working in Visit Fergus Falls. So, that person has to manage the website, the events, social media vendors, content production, grants, presentation, photography, videography, blog, interviews, strategy, evaluation campaigns, buying merchandise. So, that was from the day one, the point that I saw, okay, we eventually need to fix this. We eventually need to, to grow the organization, because the most successful organization, tourism organizations in the area, like Visit Duluth, or Visit Dimigi, or Fargo-Moorhead, all of them had a, had a team of three or four people, all of them. So, hold that thought, because I'm gonna come back to that one. So, 2024 actually was the year of strategy. We had running two or three Google campaigns per month. We elevated our presence in Explorer, Minnesota. We used to do ads of One Six in magazines from Explorer, Minnesota. And now, you know, when you do One Six ad and you are around ten more One Six ads, probably offering kind of the same, you're gonna get lost in that. So, we actually now are doing half-page. So, it's more probably that people is gonna drop their eyes on the half-page than in One Six ad. Our occupancy in Fergus Falls has been up, even when the whole state of Minnesota and even when the whole United States has been down this year. So, in 2024, our Google campaigns were Explore West Central Minnesota, the Central Lakes Trail, Over the River Holiday Festival, Fergus Falls Hike, Bike and Stay, Visit Fergus Falls. That's a generic that you can use all year long. The Summer VIP Pass, Discover the Jewel of the Midwest, and a video campaign in Google campaign and in a YouTube campaign and in streaming platforms. A Google campaign requires an insane amount of assets. So, at least you have to have twenty really good pictures, and you have to have videos in every format possible, in, in long, square, long, short. So, when you're gonna build a Google campaign, that's a lot of work. But, you know, we did it in our campaigns. These are examples that the assets that you use in a Google campaign. And then, I'm gonna show you the results we had in 2024. Let's go to this one, there you are. The red one, the bar, the red bar is 2023. The blue bar is 2024. Look that we almost tripled. Sometimes we triple, some months, we almost tripled the amount of people visiting our website. And, and, you know, and the, the results to me were like absolutely stunning. I wasn't even, me, I wasn't even expecting that. I mean, it drove an insane amount of people to the website. But if we pull back a little bit to be the big picture, to see the big picture, you'll see that in 2024, this year compared with 2023, United States as a whole has been in negative. For example, in January, it was negative, minus zero point one. Minnesota, the state, was minus three point three overall. Central Minnesota was minus five, and Fergus Falls was plus four seven. So, we actually been kind of defying gravity with this. And the Google campaign has been, you know, absolutely fantastic to bring people. This graphic, the next one, is month by month, to September, because it's the last data that I have. And you can see that overall, Visit Fergus Falls from January to September was up 4.1%. And you can see that, you know, that Minnesota maybe had two months on positive, but the rest were negative. And USA has maybe like two months on positive, and the rest are in negative. So, compared with the rest of the landscape, we are doing pretty good. So, 2025, our plans in 2025, because we saved a good amount of money. We didn't have to pay for the video, because, you know, that's what I do. We didn't have to pay for photography, because that's my, one of my, I'm a photographer, so. And we, when I spotted those pain points that I had about the events and about one person only working for this institution, you know, the plan to me was get the enough money to make really bold movements that are gonna generate actually to grow. So, in 2025, we're gonna, we're gonna implement in our website, this is a platform that grabs all the events for, in every zip code that you, that you input in there, it grabs the events and send it to me already. The only thing that I have to do is approve or not approve. So, that would take out of my, that would take out an immense time, an immense amount of time that I, you know, that I really go for, like hunting events in every social media platform. This is an investment of thirteen thousand dollars, but I think it's, you know, it's the great, it's one of the best things that we can do. And then, you see, you know, there's some cases of cities that have implemented this system, and you can see that all the visitors and all the metrics for them have been growing up significantly. The other platform that we're gonna integrate is itineraries. So, we wanna, when people visit our website, we want people, we want to give ideas already, blinding their minds what we can do. For example, you can, you can build any amount of itineraries that you want. For example, if you want to do an itinerary for, you know, hunting for antiques, you get your itinerary with maps, with everything telling you where to go. And if you want to do an itinerary of the national, of the state parks, you got it. I mean, everything, you can create every amount of itineraries in the website that you want.
What was that first itinerary, hunting for ticks?
I'm sorry?
Antiques.
Antiques, antiques. Not ticks.
Sorry, I missed.
Would be ticks also to, if you go, if you go in the summer to the parks. And the number one, and the number three, and the most important one, would be a part-time help. Now, we are in the position to hire somebody that can take on social media exclusively. And actually, this will be the first opportunity that we will have for this, for Visit Fergus Falls to actually start growing as an institution. As I told you, the most successful CVVs in the area, all of them has at least three people. But I would really love this institution to grow and to, you know, and to get more and more efficient in what we do. I mean, I think we're doing, we are in the right way, in the right path. But, but, you know, the truth is that an institution managed for one people is gonna go as far as that people, as that person can go. It's, it means you, you really, if you're gonna get serious, you really need to, to get, to ask for help. That would be an investment of twenty-five thousand dollars, more or less. But we are now in the position to do that. We're also gonna start in January an strategic workshop with North Point professionals that are gonna help us a little bit to, to explore more possibilities for Visit Fergus Falls. That would be an investment of five thousand dollars. And we also want to expand our campaigns to new areas, because in the data, if you can see, I mean, you will be surprised what is the number one city visiting our website, is Chicago. And then, we have Dallas, we have Miami, we have Jacksonville and Orlando, and visiting constantly since the website went up. So, why not hit those cities with campaigns? For example, you can hit Florida with a campaign for fall, they don't have fall. So, you know, you can actually hit those areas to get, you know, to get people. You just have to put Fergus on the map if you want visitors. So, that's what we are planning to do. And this is, and the last one is a little bit, a little snapshot of, of the social media, how it has grown since, since we, since I took Visit Fergus Falls. You know, outreach has gone up more than, almost a thousand percent. The content interaction has gone like seven hundred percent up. The links click, 3.9K percent up. The visits, 2.5K up, and the follows, 31.1% up. So, I think that this, this year is a year of great opportunities for Visit Fergus Falls, because, you know, we have the funds to do those bold movements. And, and we actually would love for this institution to grow and, and, you know, and get better results. I mean, the results in 2024, to me, were like stunning, but, you know, we're gonna keep growing on that, so.
Thank you, Rolando.
Thank you. If you guys have any questions.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure there's some questions from the, from the council, but thanks for your presentation and thanks for the work. And, yeah, those results are quite astounding, so. Councilmember Job?
Thank you for being here today. Couple of questions.
Sure.
I couldn't see your slides very well, but could you share those with us, those numbers?
Absolutely, I have a presentation right here, and I can send it to you.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
What platforms are you on right now for social media?
We are in Instagram and Facebook for now.
Yeah.
Because, you know, opening another social media platform to manage.
Takes time.
I mean, at, at some point, I mean, you can do what you can do, and you have the time you have to do, but you got to. So, we are concentrating on Facebook, mostly Facebook, because it's the kind of people that visit our website, is that kind of age, you know, over forty. So, that would be the platform to go, for people over forty.
Thank you.
But, but we have Instagram too, and, you know, and I really would love to open a TikTok account. But hopefully, if, you know, if we go with these plans and I get some help, that would be one of my fair, my, my, my main points.
Oh, you could have fun with a TikTok account.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. And there's a lot to show in TikTok, so that's, that's one of the things that I would really want to do.
Are you currently doing ads on YouTube at all?
Yeah, YouTube, no, not now, because the last campaign that we did on YouTube, even though we had forty-four views, forty-four thousand views, sorry, I didn't see it reflected in the website. So, you see, when you put a campaign, you see in your website, you know, how many people that campaign drove.
Yeah, that conversion.
Yeah, the conversion. And it wasn't that great. So, I kept, you know, even when, when you do other types of Google page, like a regular or a Pro Max, or, you know, they have several types of campaigns, you actually have to insert video there. So, I thought, you know, it was better to do it there and not in YouTube, because honestly, it didn't drove so much people to the website.
Interesting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Others, yeah, Anthony, go ahead.
Rolando, thank you. I appreciate the update, and I think that's something that we'd like to see on a more regular basis. Obviously, you've been busy for a person of one. But a couple of questions, follow up a little bit on what Laura asked on. So, what type of demographics would you say that, you know, the, obviously, we, we've actually had, obviously, success in putting, you know, heads on beds? You know, what, what are those kind of people, you know, are they coming to, what are they coming to do, or do we not know that?
Well, I mean, we, we can know the people who visits the website, because the data is right there, but, you know.
I mean, is there a particular interest that, you know, is it sort of hiking, is it biking?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. You can see it in the website. The number, the number one, the number one is hiking and biking.
Right.
Believe it or not, that's the number one interest on the website. The other interest is events, and that's why I, you know, I've been suggesting my board to do that platform of events, because it's gonna populate our website with events, and it's, it's gonna be a lot better, you know? Sometimes, I go every week to hunt for events in Facebook and Instagram, but, but I can miss one, I can miss two. I can miss maybe an event that is in Pelican Rapids that we could include in our website, because we are just twenty minutes from there. And, and we're actually promoting Fergus Falls as a hub to explore west central Minnesota, because we have a disadvantage with other towns that have actual lakes in town, and there are lake resorts. So, so we're promoting Fergus as a hub to explore all the rest of the land of a thousand forty-eight lakes.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, because that's one thing that's always frustrated me, is that it's like fourteen calendars you have to look at.
Yeah.
And, and so, as you say.
And the good thing is that, you know, we, we are, I mean, I don't know if you have been in the, in the New Back Trail on Glendalo? I mean, that's absolutely fantastic. So, those kind, that kind of stuff, we are gonna be heavy promoting it, because, I mean, are great assets on the area. And if, and if we promote only, you know, only Fergus Falls as a town, I mean, we, we're gonna limit ourselves while we can, you know, promote this as a hub to be cozy, because we have the best infrastructure in the area. So, we have more hotels, we have culture, we have theater, we have art, we have a lot of stuff that will make the town as a cozy hub to explore the rest of the area.
Any other questions?
Yeah, first off, Rolando, I, I enjoyed working with you in 2023. I own the billboard company, we did a big billboard to promote Visit Fergus Falls.
We spoke on the phone, yeah.
And all of that, which is, which is great. I've been on the council three, three day, or three weeks now, but if I see more people come in front of us that had the passion you have coming in front of us today, I, I would be very happy. I tell you what, I love people that have passion for what they're doing and grow things, and that's exactly what you're doing. The question I have for you, though, you brought up twenty-five thousand and five thousand up on that, that's needed? Are you actually, are you asking the city for that today, or is that stuff that you're gonna raise through the logic?
No, 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 we have, we have that in our budget.
Okay.
We have, I mean, the first, the first two years, I didn't want to spend, because we had to spend, because I didn't, I mean, the first year, I may, I didn't understand that much. I mean, I was, I was just. I mean, I was, I was just learning about Fergus Falls, learning about the area. I have to tell you that Jim Baumann was a saint of patience with me, asking her every five minutes stuff. And my first year was kind of like catch up with everything that was going on. And the second year, it was, you know, to see the strategy that I could take, you know, to make this grow. Because eventually, if you want better, better results, you need to grow. As I told you, you know, I can do, I mean, I can do things till some point. But, and that point is, that is gonna be the point where the institution is gonna be.
You bet. And so, so again, you're not asking us for that money, which is, which is great. Which is, I mean, unbelievable. But what you're looking at is you're increasing occupancy in these hotels to increase your staff, which will increase your network presence on social media and everywhere else, right? Which will increase Fergus Falls, which will help us grow. So then the thing that I ask you is, a couple of things. Is there anything that's connected to you with business or that Bigwood Event Center that can help us grow business in the event center?
Look, I don't know if we can go to that. Okay, go, 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 go.
Take back the other way.
Right. Go, 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 go. No, keep going. Keep going, keep going. More, 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 more. It's almost at the end.
You're going the wrong direction.
Almost, oh.
Went backwards.
Well, I can read it to you. These are, these are the campaigns that we have already planned for two thousand twenty, for two thousand twenty-five. It's antique hunting in Fergus Falls, hiking in Fergus Falls, fishing in Fergus Falls, the aquatic center, because that's a new asset that we're gonna have in the summer. The hunting adventure, that's for the hunting season in Fergus Falls. Bigwood Event Center, plan your event, biking, Central Lakes Trail and state parks. The summer concert in Fergus Falls, a fabulous scenic drive, road trips in Fergus Falls. Evergreen, Visit Fergus Falls, Evergreen is that, that video that you can show at every moment of the year because I have a little bit of every season. Evergreen of Hike Bag Estate that is running already. History and Art in Fergus Falls, Summer Fest and Over the River Holiday Festival. Those are the campaigns that we have. Also, I would like to tell you guys that, you know, I'm super open to any suggestions. You guys know the city, so, and we have a member of the council in my board. So any suggestion, please, let me know and I will work on that.
Appreciate, I appreciate your time today. One thing I've learned in business is that you team up with people that are smarter than you in areas that you don't know how to do, and that appears to be what you are today.
Thank you.
Rolando, could you tell us or could you get this, like from twenty-three to twenty-four, how many rooms we actually gained? I know, I think the funding has gone up, but I, I don't know if that's because of the price of the rooms have gone up or whatever. But is there a gain in what you're doing? I mean, I'm sure there is.
Well, I can find that info. I don't have it with me now.
No, no, I, no, I mean, I knew that.
But yeah.
But could you keep, like give us updates, maybe every six months or something, how the, how the growth is coming?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, my board is full of hotel people, so.
Visit Fergus Falls is, I know there, I know what it says, they would say is to fill the rooms. So that's kind of what I wanna know, how the rooms are, are, are growing.
Yeah, yeah, we'll figure it out, I'll figure it out with the hotels. And I can give you a report every, you know, every six months or whenever you want.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rolando, and to the board. And just a reminder for the public, your organization, Visit Fergus Falls, is one hundred percent funded by the lodging tax in Fergus Falls, correct? So the better you do, the more funding you have to go out and increase the services and the advertising, the marketing to promote Fergus Falls.
Yeah, and that was, basically, that was the idea, you know? I was holding a little bit the money the first three years because, I mean, I needed to understand how everything worked. And, and, but the pain points that I saw, I saw it from the beginning. So I wanted to keep that money there to actually, you know, step in and make this institution grow. And now in this year, we have that opportunity, I think, for the first time in twenty-one years.
Thank you, Rolando. Thank you, Visit Fergus Falls. Next, we'll have an update on the Bigwood Event Center marketing. We'll ask our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, to give us that update. Good morning, Andrew.
Yeah, good morning, Your Honor members. Tough act to follow. Thank you, Rolando. Great job. Maybe more so looking for direction this morning, how to proceed. But back in August, Leighton Media was here presenting to us a plan for marketing of the Bigwood. That included two phases, the first being an exchange for use of rooms at the Bigwood. We receive free media on Leighton-owned channels and those ads are in process of being developed. Maybe they're running already, but they're real close. We heard some prototypes last week and we're working on final approvals for those. And then phase two was more of, you know, I'm not a marketing expert. Laura is kind of our tax levy expert on this, but I think Rolando touched on some of it this morning. Search engine marketing, Google campaigns, SEO, SRO, I don't know what that means. I'm not the expert, I'm just the spokesperson. But what they were proposing was to do, you know, some real targeted advertising in a radius outside of Fergus Falls. We're looking at seventy-five hundred dollar, excuse me, a fifteen hundred dollar request. And in August, what we're looking at doing is starting that in quarter four of last year, get some traction and then really go at it at the beginning of two thousand twenty-five. Because that didn't happen, now we're looking at just starting right away in two thousand twenty-five if the council wishes to proceed in that direction. And we're looking at, is it fifteen thousand today, Bill, that we're asking for or seventy-five hundred?
So seventy-five hundred initially to do like a six month. And if that goes well, then we could do another seventy-five hundred to do fifteen for the year. We have put fifteen thousand in the Bigwood budget, knowing that comes from a transfer from our liquor store to fund that. But, so it's kind of in two phases, but fifteen thousand for the year. But we would review it after the six months. And then if the council is happy with that and would wanna move forward with an additional six months, so.
Yeah, from a data and metrics perspective, Leighton has committed that every six to eight weeks, they would get us data, they would meet with us, they would answer questions. Our intent would be to share that data with the city council to understand if these campaigns are effective and if they're driving traffic. Ultimately, you know, we're looking for direction from the council on how they wish to proceed. I will add two cents of commentary that I don't feel like we've done a good job of marketing the facility since we reopened it. And I think if we're gonna give this facility a fair shake and really see if, you know, the long-term viability exists for this facility, we probably ought to make the investment sooner than later and see if there's any impact of that. Because right now, it's mostly organic with a couple of Facebook posts here and there that frankly, haven't gained a lot of traction. So just looking for direction. I, again, this isn't my wheelhouse or expertise, but we had to arm wrestle about who was gonna present it. And Tax Levy Committee did insert this in the two thousand twenty-five budget that you guys heard last week. So anything to add from committee members?
I just feel that we're kind of at that crossroad, like are we gonna market or are we just gonna sit stagnant? And so in order for us to really, you know, like you said, Andrew, you said it great, was, you know, we have to invest in some marketing in order to gain some traction there. Or it's going to sit pretty idle the way that it is.
I'll add just a, just a comment so that everyone is aware. We've had basically one full-time employee there that is working on the Bigwood, you know, running the events. Brandon Curry, our liquor store manager oversees that, but that's just a snippet of his time. But I really wanna give a shout out to our person that's been, you know, daily working at the Bigwood Center, and she's doing a great job. But again, it's a lot for one person, and that's why we haven't done a lot of marketing. So just to put that in context, so I probably interrupted. Were you gonna?
Thanks, Bill.
I just wanna, we have to decide if we're gonna market this thing right or if we're just gonna leave it stagnant and decide what we're gonna do with it in twenty-six. And if we do something with it in twenty-six, we have to make that decision early on in twenty-five because people booking events on, in twenty-six, you know, already, I think. So I, I, we talked about this quite a bit, trying to put one, put some money towards it. We haven't done anything like that. I think it'd be a great thing. I think greater Fergus Falls should be a part of that also. I just don't know what, I'm sorry, wait, great, not, Visit Fergus Falls. Too many, too many ads. I'm sorry. And so I think it'd be a good, I, I'm all in favor of pushing a little market to it. I think with Rolando just said, what marketing's done to his organization is, is, is really got some good traction. I think it'd be good for us too. And Laura is the one with all these abbreviations that I had no idea what they were. And so I think it's a good idea to move ahead with that, so.
Thanks, Andrew.
I, I think one of the questions that got raised last time was not, I don't think the council was against marketing. I think, you know, they, they asked if there would be some assistance from Visit Fergus Falls to expand that marketing. Because I think the initial marketing was only like fifty mile radius of Fergus. And that kind of like for double that money, we could go a hundred miles. And, you know, a hundred miles would then captulate kind of, obviously, other communities. And I think that was, I think that was the reason that there was no decision at the time was we were gonna, we'd, we put a formal request in to Visit Fergus Falls to see whether they would, you know, assist with that program to expand that marketing reach. And obviously, do we have an answer on that?
I would defer to these folks if anybody wants to speak to that.
Well, I can speak to that. We had a presentation. I invited the people from Leighton to do a presentation to us about how the campaign is gonna be. They were presenting us actually Google campaigns, which is the same thing we do. So, and they were talking, I mean, the day of the presentation, they were talking to us about twenty mile radio promotion. And we say, okay, but twenty mile radio promotion is, no, gonna put heads on beds. And, and also, we were told that there was gonna be a stage of, there was kind of a interchange between the city. You know, that was gonna be like three months from October to December that campaign was, was gonna start. And my board thought, okay, let's see what are those results, and then we jump in. I mean, we just, I mean, we are here to promote Fergus Falls. And if that campaign is gonna be effective to do, you know, a promotion for the Bigwood and a promotion also that can bring heads on beds, we are all in. But we really, I mean, the only thing is that my board wanted to see, you know, the results of that first stage that was gonna be from October to December to see, you know, to even see if we could do like suggestions to them or, you know, or see or understand how the campaign works, how the campaigns they're gonna do works. Because they don't give us, they don't give us examples or anything. They just like talk to us on that day about, you know, the, the Google campaigns they were gonna do. So we wanted to know, you know, what the result of the first stage was and then jump in. You know, if the results are great, we're in.
I just wanna clarify that the, the trade and the twenty mile radius is part of phase one. And that twenty mile radius, any conversation about a radius is based on radio promotion? Because we all know when we're in our car and we're listening to a station, the farther away we get from the market, the weaker the signal gets. So that's the, that first phase is where the radio and the radius plays in. But the Google, the phase two, the, the pay-to-play, the SEM, the cost per impressions, that's all on other people's real estate. And that's, we'll target and personalize who we're, who we're searching for and measure that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, good to know. So that's what is the, the position of my board. I mean, if, if this is a good thing and we are, I mean, we are ready to jump in.
I, I mean, I would obviously say that, you know, if, if it's weddings and things like that, that's gonna put heads on beds, you know, too. But I don't know whether twenty miles, I, I don't think twenty miles gets us, is going to turn the Bigwood around.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think if we're going to do a marketing campaign, it has to, it's gotta be greater than twenty miles. I mean, that, that's basically getting somebody from Breckenridge.
We say that it's gonna be, I mean, the distances here are, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the, that's the phase two that we're talking about that has the cost associated with it. Twenty miles is not as expensive.
I mean, and the, but hold on, the cost is not that much. Let me, let me tell you something. We do Google campaigns and we have a budget for Google campaigns a month, you know? The first year was a thousand dollars a month just for Google campaigns. We are promoting in all the states surrounding Minnesota. We are promoting in the whole state of Minnesota. We are promoting in Chicago and we are promoting in Dallas right now. And we, we don't pass of the budget that I have of a thousand dollars that I have a month for, for, for those campaigns. So I'm promoting in a lot of places. I mean, five states, even we're promoting in Winnipeg. And I don't pass the thousand dollars budget for, for a year. And I, and you saw the results. So I think it's the way to build the campaign that is gonna, you know, that is gonna tell you how much. I mean, the most, I mean, the radios, the radio is not gonna impact the price that much as the beat that you do for the, for the, for the, for the impression that they. You know, you put a, you know, you say, I'm able to pay fifteen cents for, for one impression. But if you say that you are able to pay forty-five cents for an impression, that campaign probably is gonna be more effective, but, you know, it's gonna cost you a little bit more.
Three times as much.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it's about the radio and the location that it's gonna affect your, your, the cost of the campaign.
Thanks, Rolando.
Yeah, thanks. So this is in the budget that's been presented for the Bigwood that the Tax Levy Committee has brought forward. And I, I guess, obviously, the results that Visit Fergus Falls have presented, it would seem to me, if we're gonna market, as people have said this morning, that organization or the Bigwood Event Center for two thousand twenty-five, investment needs to be made. And we ask Visit Fergus Falls to be a partner as we go forward and see the results coming back from the, to expand that marketing if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, I think we should do it right. And obviously, we have someone in Rolando on the Visit Fergus Falls board who know how to do that, so. That's where we're at at this point. The money's in the, in the budget for the Bigwood, correct?
Your Honor, Your Honor, Andrew, can you give us the amount that that Bigwood loses last year? What it lost, how much it's going down?
Bill could.
What's that?
Bill could, yeah.
So for the current year for two thousand twenty-four, where we're at, Sandy, we're estimating a hundred and twenty-four thousand transfer from the liquor store, I believe, right? So a hundred and twenty-four thousand was the shortfall that we had budgeted from the liquor store and actually transferring the balance of that in Monday night's council meeting, so. And what was it the prior year? Maybe eighty-three thousand, I think?
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
How much is that hotel out there marketing this Bigwood Event Center for us?
A hotel? I don't think they're marketing, we.
At all.
We don't have a, an agreement with them.
Okay. Even though if someone comes in for a function, they're gonna stay there, they're gonna do different things. But they're not putting any effort into marketing that Bigwood Center with us, right?
That's not in our budget to market the event center, we market the hotel.
The hotel. Okay.
A lot of that's not through Choice Hotels International, that's a part of the, of the most of our marketing.
Okay, so we don't have any.
We're with the events and what it does come with groups and looking for little blocks.
Okay, but nothing.
Pass along that information, we'll follow up on it.
Okay, yeah. My thoughts are this, that I'm gonna agree with Scott, which maybe doesn't happen all the time. But I respect his position that we've gotta do something. I don't think, and I'm not gonna say nothing about another competing media company like Leighton Broadcasting because they're very good. I meet with them and talk with them quite a bit. But I think we have to connect up with Visit Fergus Falls. That's where we really gotta go if we're gonna change this thing around. And I think we've gotta see the results to come in and then make a decision there. I'm not sure Leighton Broadcasting is exactly the route to go today with me, but that'll be the council's decision.
All right, so this, you know, there'll be more discussion on, on.
We can bring it to the council on Monday night.
On Monday night.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Yeah, it's already, I don't think we need a motion, it's already in the budget. We'll have it in the discussion on Monday night. Just one, yeah, okay, we'll leave it there for now. Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Next item is a Pebble Lake Golf Course Management Lease Agreement. Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor members. I know a little bit more about this one, so my apologies on the last one. But hopefully, we can make up some time on our agenda with this because it's fairly routine. What we're looking at doing is just. What we're looking at doing is just extending the management lease contract with Pebble Lake Golf Club for one year. As you all recall, in November, we learned that the potential transaction of the golf course was on hold. We met with them recently as a, as a committee. Their intent in 2025 is to continue to explore that and talk about what that may look like. If that proves not to be fruitful, then they would be looking at more of a long-term management agreement. So we're just kind of looking to keep things operationally the same with the existing agreement set to expire at the end of this year. The only changes that we made to the agreement were moving the dates one year out, so the new proposed agreement would expire at the end of 2025. And then we increased the insurance requirements that were listed in the agreement that Pebble Lake Golf Club would have to hold. We went from 1 million per occurrence to two, 1 million per occurrence, 2 million aggregate to 2 million per occurrence, 2 million aggregate. And my understanding is they already carry insurance that exceeds these limits even more so than that. So just wanted to be more uniform with some of our other agreements that we have in place on insurance requirements. We did a bigger dive into this contract a year ago and then had a handful of meetings to, to work through that and make edits. So we didn't spend really any time reviewing this at this point in time, other than changing those dates and those numbers with the agreement that it would be looked at as a, as a more permanent solution in 2025, just to keep things going. So any questions, I'm happy to entertain those. Otherwise.
I will offer that.
Push that to the council.
Thanks, Jim. Second, Scott, questions for Andrew? All in favor of the motion to bring this to the council on Monday, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Next, we will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro, for a update on the Fur Freiburg Roundabout. Good evening, good evening. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Your Honor and council members. Yes, Hutterdale County, the lead agency on this project, has timely scheduled the bid opening for the Fur Freiburg Roundabout. Just to point out, this is just an exhibit. There is a few modifications to this, but I just wanted to give you an exhibit of what we're looking at here. The estimated total construction cost is $1.78 million. In December, last December, we submitted an application for the local road improvement program to fund a portion of the capital construction cost of this project. The state awarded us $790,000 to the city county, which is expected to cover 100% of the city's eligible costs. Just want to know utilities, engineering expenses are not eligible and that cannot be used for any other project. So based on a total engineer's estimate that was submitted to the state for this project, both the state, county, and I agree that the project would be able to spend all the bond funds that is origination for this LRIP grant. So we don't necessarily wait, have to wait till after the bid opening. If acceptable is what we need to do, then I have an attached resolution in the packet for the LRIP. We must draft and adopt this sample resolution requesting the agreement and committing to the terms of this grant in the amount of $790,000. Any event bids coming lower than the full 790,000, $790,000 could be used. We'd have to come back and it would have to be revised, but we don't anticipate that happening because like I mentioned, 100% will be applied to the city share and the remaining proceeds will go towards the county. I have in our budgetary impacts, we're estimating the total project cost of about $2.45 million. If you add in LRIP or deduct that amount, a revised total estimate of project cost of about $1.65 million. The estimated county share is 1.3 and a total estimated city share of about $350,000. Now of that, I just want to mention, we are doing some sewer and water improvements. So the city street funding is about $150,000. Water improvements, $65,000. And the sanitary sewer enterprise fund for $135,000 to fully fund this project at this time. Like I said, we have not taken bids yet. This is just based off estimates. So as what I'm requesting, I'm going to make just a little bit of an amendment to, on the memo, I'm going to be requesting a resolution adopting the LRIP resolution and authorizing staff to submit this resolution to the LRIP program in an amount of $790,000. So I'll open up any questions you may have.
So just to clarify, that's basically to accept the state grants and to apply them towards this project in the amount of $790,000?
Correct.
That's what the resolution that we're asking for today?
Yes. I will offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second and we'll get to discussion.
Yeah, second, Scott, thank you. Questions, Mr. Mortensen, do you have a question?
Brian, I appreciate your time with it. I just want to make sure that the taxpayers know that this is $790,000 of grant money. This isn't city money that we're, we're paying out for this, right?
Correct.
And do we know the exact start date and the projected completion of this project?
We don't, I couldn't look and get that to you, you know, we got the bids. So once we generally take the bids, get the projects awarded, then we'll sit down and have the pre-construction meeting. I'll have a lot more information for you at that, at that time. So if we get favorable bids, my anticipation that this project would start and be substantially completed of 2025.
2025. The other thing that I think I'll get asked questions about is that's kind of a, if you're going to do construction, there's going to be a weird area for traffic. Do we know how it's going to affect traffic in that area during the course of this construction?
It's, it's a very good question. Yes, we are relying on the contractor. We have discussed it with the county. There will be some sort of a detour. I think it's going to be a temporary detour pretty much within the vicinity because I'm not going to recommend detouring any traffic through some local streets we have in that area and neighboring neighborhoods. So the plan is to do some temporary, temporary roads, access points around the roundabout to maintain it. It's going to be a little tricky, but there's going to be probably about the best we can do for this node up there we got in the area of the city, so.
Sounds fun.
Yeah, I'm sure, yes.
Thank you, Brian. So there's a motion to bring this agreement for approval to the council on Monday evening. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Next is Public Improvement, 8231 and 7224. Improvements, infrastructure to Scenic Drive. Again, Brian Uvaro.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As staff, we've substantially completed the project plans and specifications for the Scenic Drive Sewer and Water Improvement Project. I just want to up on the projection right there. If you recall, this is a petition project is what was approved was option number one, a 1,200 lineal foot of 12-inch water main extension. And then option three, about 450 lineal feet of sanitary sewer to provide services for the abutting properties. The estimated product, total project cost is $260,000. Because of this, we must, must advertise, competitive bid advertised for bids. I don't have the actual bid date yet, but I'm anticipating I'd set it for maybe late January. Just like other projects, we've done petition projects in the past. We, the overall project accounts for doing the final assessment hearing prior and at the time of awarding the construction service contract. Like I mentioned, once bids are received, the lowest responsible bidders itemized costs are utilized into the final assessment rolls. And then now we're requesting, now we set the final hearing date, so on and so forth. If everything is approved and like I mentioned, if we get favorable bid prices, actual construction could begin spring 2025 and be completed fall as well. So at this time is when I'm requesting is a resolution accepting the project and plans and specifications for Public Improvement 8231 and 7224. And also a resolution authorizing the advertisement bids.
Thank you, Brian. We can bring this to the council for consideration through a motion this morning. Someone?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Second, thank you. Laura, questions for Brian? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you. One last engineering update, and that is on the Aquatic Center. Again, Brian, please.
Yes, thank you. I didn't prepare a memo or anything. I just figured a few pictures and everything, especially in consideration of time. We'll just go through a few pictures with the project and everything and just to note the project is actively being worked on. If we get back up just a little bit to the first.
Your Honor, obviously in interest, I think city council meeting would appreciate this. There's a lot more viewers that on a Monday night, come each show these pictures again on Monday evening?
Certainly.
Yes.
I think, you know, I think, I think it would be good to push this, I mean, unless there's anything you need to tell us, but I think it would be better for a broader audience on Monday night.
Perfectly fine.
So you don't do it twice.
Everyone okay with that?
Appreciate that.
It looks really good. I mean, it's, it's, we must be ahead of schedule, right, Brian?
We're on schedule.
Thanks, Brian. Turn our attention to public works. Call on our public works director, Guy Taylor. Two updates first, or two action items. First is a sidewalk removal contract. Good morning, Guy.
Good morning, Your Honor and members. Thank you. Yes, two seasonally timely subjects. First is resolution designating Atlas Outdoor Services as our sidewalks' snow removal contractor. This is for sidewalks of properties that don't maintain the sidewalks in front of their property that by code they are obligated to maintain. So Atlas submitted the loan bid and recommending that they be designated our official contractor. And hourly, they will charge for different services, $60 per hour for shoveling, $75 per hour for a walk behind snow blower and on down the line, a few different other pieces of equipment. So encouragement to the property owners to take care of it themselves. We do see some property owners that get a bill of upwards to $250 to $300. So we just encourage that everybody take care of their responsibilities related to sidewalks.
Thanks, Guy. Someone like to offer that we move this to the council on Monday evening? Thank you, Scott. Scott, second, questions?
Len, can you, can you tell us why we're only getting one bid from one contractor for this? Why do you think that that's occurring?
I don't really know. We did put a ad out on our social media and on the website. And then I made a couple of calls to vendors and Atlas was our only submittal.
What is the city's role if we don't get a bid, say next year? Say nobody shows up? Will that be employees that'll do it?
It would be.
Okay.
Any other questions for Guy? Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
I think we've already got contracts with Atlas for some other city spaces like the CBHH and whatnot, right?
Yes, and they also do our.
We're switching the CBHH one though to match a different company that the state is using elsewhere.
Okay.
To be clear.
But we got, yeah, we've got experience with them at other facilities. We've had other contracts with them, yeah.
Yes, they do our lawn care too for people that don't take care of their lawns as well. So, yeah, we've had good experience with them.
Thanks, Scott. So there's a motion to bring the approval of this contract to the council on Monday evening. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And finally, snow plow truck purchase, Guy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, one of the essential services that we provide is snow removal. And we have a schedule for replacement of our snow plows of 20 years. So Unit 263, we did purchase in 2005. It's scheduled for replacement. This would be the configuration of the new truck. What you don't see on the right-hand side of the truck is a wing plow. So back in 2005, when Unit 263 was purchased, that truck was purchased for $88,000. This one's 260-plus. So like Kayla mentioned this morning, equipment costs have just gone crazy. We do fortunately have in-house staff that can do most of our maintenance. So Cody, Craig and Adam do a great job for us, but equipment costs just are crazy. So the difference, so in the new truck is we've got the side, the saddle tanks with Brian and then the wing plow. So those costs weren't, that configuration wasn't in this 2005 purchase. It was just a straight plow. So it's not apples, apples price comparison, but still, the point is, the equipment costs are crazy. So the purchase that we would, I'm proposing to you is the 2025 Freightliner 108 SD from I-State Truck Center for a price of $261,748. And that's from the state contract. And we've been advised that the trade-ins that we've been getting aren't so great. So we're going to try to auction this truck rather. So we'll be looking to auction that with mid-state auctions. So it's, yeah, resolution also to declare 263 surplus.
Thank you, Guy. So we can bring this to the council, the authorization to purchase this new truck.
I'll make that, Your Honor, then I got a question.
Declare surplus to Unit 263. Thank you, Anthony. Second, thank you, Mr. Mortensen. Go ahead, Anthony.
Just on the Burt's Truck Equipment, the quote was from February 17, 2024. Are they honoring that price?
That must be a mis-dated document because it's a more recent quote than that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Anthony. Mr. Mortensen, did you have a question?
No.
Any other questions? Guy? Question from the audience, Mr. Leighton?
What's, what's down here?
Is it on, is it on this particular item?
No, I want to go back to the convention center.
Okay, so there's a motion to bring the authorization to purchase this vehicle and to declare Unit 263 surplus to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you. With that, I think we're, can it, we'll be discussing it on Monday evening, is that?
If I have two minutes.
Certainly.
Thank you. I would request for Monday night, council member meeting for the convention center that a true picture is presented? How much was invested in it? What did you buy it for? What improvements have been made? We've been in this thing for what, five years? What the actual losses are? What the carrying costs are? How many programs or events are programmed for '25? So that a real discussion can be made on the viability of this. And I think Mr. Rachel said one time it was going to cost.
60.
60 grand to darken it. I like to see those numbers compared to what the, the actual open costs are. Then the council can make a decision. Do we keep it open? Do you close it? If there's a bunch of events for '25, we're not going to kick them out, but do you just shut it down after that? Just quit taking stuff? I think remember, takes three years to get this profitable. Are we on five now or six? No.
It's on, what are we at?
Three.
Four? Did we reopen? 20?
So just bring the facts from Monday night, so everybody can have it. Thank you for your time.
Third year? So we're in the third year.
Thanks.[1772.54]